Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the September 16th City Council Meeting. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Bedling.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempass.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin. Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Invitation, Bishop Colburn, please.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you again for another City Council meeting. We thank you for our mayor, for this council. We thank you for the entire administration of our city. We ask your blessings upon us. We remember those peoples in Washington today, their family. We pray for them in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Let us allegiance to the flag and the citizens of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under Mayor's comments, I'd like to advise those of you seated that our sister city, Miyazaki, Japan, is here. They landed at 6:30. Unfortunately, they can't be here tonight to represent Japan. They will be here all day tomorrow and the next day. I'll tell you, they were very gracious when I was there to visit with them. It's a wonderful exchange we have with that community. I'm sorry they're not here because they're absolutely wonderful people. That's all for Mayor's comments. Under audience time, John Belmonte, 2248 Ninth Parkway.
That's correct, yes. I'm here to speak about the city permitting public events. I'm not exactly sure what's required in a way of insurance and other things, but I think it has to be tweaked a little bit with the spectacle we had this weekend at the Belvedere Mall. The volume on Saturday from early afternoon till after dark was just off the charts, over the top. It permeated all the houses, all the way to 10th Street. If you're down in the basement, doors shut and everything else, the volume, what was going on, just came right through like you had a radio in your house. Later on, from what I've been informed, somebody went over there and told them to cut it back. But I was hoping there was some way the city would have some control over these things to keep a public event from becoming a public nuisance and disturb the peace and quiet of your residents. That's about it.
Okay, Mr. Belmonte, would you please see Mr. George Torres? He's in the back with his hand up. He will address that with you, sir.
Okay.
I understand your concern, and we will address it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Joe Russell, 520 South Martin Luther King.
Thank you. I'm here at the request of Alderman Cunningham to relate a series of events that happened over the past...
Just bring it down low.
Oh, there you go. I'm here at the request of Alderman Cunningham to relate a series of events that occurred over the past two weeks. On September 1st, I made my first phone call regarding the condition of a delinquent derelict property at 414 McKinley. The windows were broken on the second floor, and the first-floor door was broken off its hinges. Over the next almost two weeks, not quite two weeks, the damage and the vandalism progressed to the point where all of the windows on the second floor were broken, and, I mean, like completely broken out, and all of the doors were broken off their hinges. And I walked my dog early in the morning past that residence, and I noticed in the morning before school and after school, the children on McKinley were playing in this derelict property. I'm a school teacher, and I'm concerned about children's safety. I live in the neighborhood, and I'm concerned about, you know, this blight property. I called, made three police reports. The policeman came, but nothing was actually done. I contacted the ward officer who related to me that there was, that the city has no money anymore to board up derelict properties, and I voiced my concern about the safety of the children, and he said that it's the city's position that the children are the liability of the parents. I, as a school teacher, and I have a grown son, am concerned that though the owner was contacted by the ward officer, that the owner of this property is not being held responsible, but the parents of the children who are simply playing, yes, they're trespassing, but they're children. We're adults. I would hope that we could, as a city, do something. I don't know, I don't know anything about finances. I don't know where Detroit is getting their money to tear down their houses. I don't know anything about law, but the owner lives in North Chicago. I would, I mean, I would hope that something could be done by the city to ensure the safety of the children.
Thank you, sir, and please be aware that we are in the process of demolishing houses. The first house on the block is coming up real soon, so it's going to start happening now. We have to take possession of the property first, but I will, if you'll leave your number with Mr. Torres outside there, I'll call you and we'll discuss it further. Thank you so much, sir. Jane Ferry.
I'm Jane Ferry, 531 Leith Avenue, and thank you for giving me this time. On behalf of the Waukegan Main Street, thank you to all the people who participated in the architectural scavenger hunt that was part of the Monarch Festival. People had a great time. We forget how beautiful our downtown architecture is. One of our volunteers on the design committee, Irene Edgar, actually put this together. She took snapshots of some of the buildings downtown, and you had to guess where the building was. It was really a lot of fun, and if you didn't have the opportunity, both the pictures and the answers, if you trust yourself, are on our website and our Facebook page. The next couple of weeks are very, very busy. I'm not going to go into absolutely everything because the mayor would cut me off. I would be up here for too long, but I do want to say that there are a lot of things going on on Saturday, the 21st, for families, for adults, for kids, for everybody who wants to get out and do something. They start out with, at 10 o'clock in the morning, a beach cleanup. Alderman May and I put together a cleanup as part of an international coastal cleanup to make sure our beach really stays beautiful. If you'd like to join us, you are more than welcome. We have bags, we have gloves. You're welcome to bring your own gloves as well. Join us at the concession stand on the south beach. Also, that day is a 5K Walk for Suicide Awareness that starts off behind the Genesee Theater at noon. They also have a festival that goes on until 5:00. If neither of those are things that you want to do, there is actually a basket weaving workshop at the Madeline Fuqua Memorial Garden on South Genesee that starts at 1:00 in the afternoon, so really a nice variety for everybody. And of course, later that day is the Art Walk. Art Walk is every third Saturday of every month. Please do come down and enjoy the art, enjoy the people. We've had a number of people say, wow, this is really a sense of community. When I come down here, I get to see all kinds of interesting people, interesting art, and on top of that, I actually get to speak to the artists. Waukegan Main Street's annual meeting, which is open to the public and everybody up here on the dais, is actually on Wednesday, September 25th at noon. We just ask you to RSVP, if you would, to the office, which is 847-623-6650, or you can tell me tonight if you'd like. The next weekend is also something that is for everybody. There is a kite festival on Saturday that starts out at 1:00 in the afternoon on the 28th. You can bring your own kites. There are crafts. There are all kinds of interesting things to do. There's an Oktoberfest at Greentown Tavern, and there are bands and Adam Carolla downtown. Adam Carolla is going to be at the Genesee Theater. If you would like to, you can go to our website to find the latest and greatest of all the information of what's going on in downtown Waukegan. We're bringing more people down there. We're opening businesses down there. Come down and enjoy it. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Ferry. Myra Retang. Myra?
Main Street.
Myra, 50 South Genesee, are you here?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Myra Retana. I'm the new queen of Waukegan's Fiesta de Patria Celebration 2013. I'm the first princess. I would like to thank Mayor Motley, the city of Waukegan sponsors, and all the residents for supporting me in this annual celebration in our community, and Comisionary of Mexico and other Central America countries and the dependents. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori, 625 Seahorse Drive.
Sorry, it's time for the list.
No? Okay. Candy Ortiz.
My name is Dulce Candy Ortiz, and I live on 10 North Sharon Road here in Waukegan. Many of you know me because I'm very involved with the community. I wear a lot of hats, and the reason I do that is just one word, really. It's love. I love this city. I love this community, and most of all, I love my son. He's here with me today because over the last couple of months, community members have been knocking on doors and talking to residents about the health and financial toll that the Waukegan coal plant pollution has had on our community. We have talked to thousands of residents and received overwhelming support about the need to build a cleaner and healthier lakefront here in Waukegan in a future beyond the polluting industry. I'm proud to say that I do not stand alone, that many people love this city as much as I love it, and tonight, we're here to announce that our community members and coalition partners have gathered over 2,000 petitions to Midwest Generation, asking for a reasonable long-term plan for its coal plant, to ensure a just transition for its workers, and to engage stakeholders in Waukegan on site reuse and redevelopment. The overwhelming majority of these postcards have been signed by Waukegan residents with the remaining from Lake County residents. Our coalition is here to announce that these postcards, that we have requested an in-person meeting with Midwest Generation to deliver them and begin this conversation. Given the uncertainty future of this company and bankruptcy, we believe it is in Waukegan's best interest to support a clear and long-term plan for this coal plant and be proactive in thinking through the future potential use of this site. Let me remind you that Waukegan North Lake County benefit from Midwest Generation. They sell their electricity in the market. We encourage Mayor Motley and the city council to support these efforts and be proactive in building a healthy and clean future, not only for our community, but for our children and the lakefront. Thank you.
Thank you, Candy. Ms. Carbajal, 1711 North McCree.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jordelia Carbajal, and I'm resident 1711 North McCree, Waukegan. I'm here as community member, and I'm in Waukegan, to help announce this collection of cards. We have done this petition, we have done through the Clean Power of Lake County Coalition. As my personal experience and what is going on there in Waukegan, well, I'm looking forward for the best future of my children's and for those kids who suffer from asthma. Personally, I have a three-years-old who is taking all my attention because he's suffering since he was five weeks old. He's suffering from a cold. I don't know from where, I don't know how, but he ended up with a stroke. I want my kid to grow up better. I want my kid to have a clean air, clean water. I want future for my kids and other kids in the community. I care about this issue a lot. I want the cleanest air for my kids. I want the healthiest environment for my children's and for the fellow community members. I believe Waukegan is heading a new and brighter direction with the new mayor. Thank you for that, and I would like a better future for our community that no longer has polluted in this industry, taking the coal plant here at the lakefront. The petition speaks for themselves. Myself and thousands of others in our community are ready for future without this pollution in our air and our lakefront. I encourage you, Mayor Motley. I encourage you, city council of Waukegan, and other elected officials, to work proactively in helping us to build a better future for our kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Jay Weatherspoon, 25, South County.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I get my work mixed up with my home address, but I am a member. I'm a resident of the city of Waukegan. As most of you know, I am the president of the Lake County NAACP. In 2010, the NAACP released a report called Cold Blooded. In that report, it lists the city of Waukegan's coal burning plant as the 12th worst polluter in the nation. It listed the plants in Chicago, 1, and 3. Since then, the city of Chicago and the mayor have worked to close both of those plants. I stand here today asking you, as elected officials, to consider a transition plan that will assist in getting this plant either closed or stop it from releasing pollutants in our air. Per capita, most of the people that are suffering from asthma and asthma-related symptoms here in Waukegan are minorities, and as such, it's important that we, as a nation, as a city, as a county, come together to ensure that our children have a healthy future. And with that, I'm asking, I'm begging you, these elected officials here in the city of Waukegan, the city that I love, the city that I have been living in for almost 20 years, to please, please consider a transition plan that will be equitable and that will ensure that our children grow up to be healthy, happy, productive adults. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherspoon. Brian, 440 West Washington, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you, Mayor Motley. My name is Brian Erberszewski. I represent an organization, Respiratory Health Association, that is a part of the Clean Power Lake County Coalition that has collected these cards. My organization is also conducting asthma management workshops for community members in Waukegan and several other nearby communities. To reiterate, exposure to coal power plant pollution damages lung tissue. It contributes to asthma attacks as well as chronic bronchitis, and the smallest particles that come in that coal plant pollution can trigger heart attacks and strokes. Unfortunately, pollution also causes premature deaths, and people do die from breathing the pollution that comes out of coal plants. Two health studies that were done in 2010, one specifically attributed the pollution from the Waukegan plant to over 550 asthma attacks, over 50 heart attacks, and over 34 premature deaths. The other found that the pollution led to $86 million in health and environmental damages over the course of one year. The final numbers I want to leave with you are the rates of asthma among children in Waukegan, as several people have already mentioned that as an issue. Nationwide, the average is 9% of children have asthma. In Illinois, the number's 13%. Based on local data collected with the help of the Lake County Health Department, Waukegan, Zion, and North Chicago show asthma rates that are as high as 27 to 33%. Waukegan is at the higher end of that. While many factors contribute to asthma, air pollution is certainly a prominent one, and the coal plant here is the largest source of air pollution in Lake County. There really is no safe, healthy way to burn coal in a community, and the long-term viability of this plant is very unlikely, given the financial condition of the company that owns it right now and the waning profitability of old coal plants across the Midwest. We therefore encourage the city of Waukegan, with everybody else here tonight, to support efforts in establishing a clear and definitive long-term plan for the coal plant that ensures a just transition for the workers that work there, as well as the community and the site and the surrounding area as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Chris Blanks, 409 Oak Street.
Brother Blanks, abolitionist, founding president of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind and the National Action Network of Lake County. We've been moving forth, you know, through the county as well as through the city to try to encourage a better sense of diversity in the community. As you know, we did a protest, a demonstration on one of the job sites here at Water Street, and I believe that's Water Street and Martin Luther King Drive, where there was low to no local hiring, no women on the job, no blacks, and it also made me think about here within our own city. And I want to question, as you continue to do the recruitment in the police department, hopefully you guys can keep in mind, because these are the young people that you see standing here with me today, who need to be working within our county. Our taxpaying citizen need jobs here, opposed to, as with the one example of the construction site in Gilbert, Illinois, which is out of Kane County, at that particular job site, brought all of its people in, and we still have an economy that is suffering here within our county. So I'm hoping that the city of Waukegan, I'm encouraging and asking you, that in your recruitment in your police department, as well as in your administration, to be mindful of our local citizens here and our young people who need employment here within our community, within the city of Waukegan. Some of the things that I want you to be mindful of in your recruitment in the police department, some of your police officers, you know, being mindful of the psychological evaluations, and as well as where the recruitment is coming from, because right now, from what I see in the police department, it can definitely have, it definitely has room for more diversity. I live right here in the first ward on the south side, and most of the time, what I see come through my community is not a reflection of the community. So perhaps we might want to consider that if you're going to hire police officers, maybe we might consider something that we can put in place to make sure that they live within the community. I think law enforcement is a lot better when we have officers who live within the community and who are being paid by the citizen of this city, opposed to coming out to various places that they have no sensitivity towards the people and who they are dealing with. So please keep in mind, if you have to put something in place, to put a policy in to make these officers move within this area once they are hired, because if they are paid by the citizen and they're going to be protected by the citizen, I think they have more of an opportunity to be sensitive towards the people they're protecting when they live and work among them and not just come to collect a paycheck and move and go elsewhere. So we want to continue to monitor this. Please keep these things in consideration to see if these officers who are being hired can at some point move here and be here amongst the people who are there serving and protecting. Thank you.
Mr. Blanks, regarding the officers living within the community, by contract language, they have the right to live outside the city. That's been upheld by the Supreme Court. We've tried to encourage them to live in the city, but unfortunately, by labor contract negotiations, they have the right to live anywhere in the state of Illinois.
Okay, maybe you might want to recruit them within the city.
Well, sir, we do. We absolutely do. I can assure you that. Thank you, Mr. Blanks. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Moiseo, to approve the minutes of September 3rd, 2013, regular minutes and executive sessions from August 19th and 26th. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolutions and calculations, resolution for Larson Marine 80th anniversary as a Waukegan-based business. Mr. Clerk?
Resolution 13R68, whereas Milton J. Larson opened for business Larson Marine Service on the north side of Waukegan Harbor in 1933, and whereas Milton Larson built the first marine railway on the western shores of Lake Michigan between Chicago and Green Bay, Wisconsin, for the purpose of hauling and storing boats, whereas in 1935, the first Larson Marine storage building was constructed on the site that is now occupied by the current Larson Marine Service showroom, and whereas the first piece of equipment acquired by Larson Marine Service was a 1912 model white truck used to move boats on and off the marine railway and has been occasionally used in recent years, and whereas in 1970, Larson Marine Service Incorporated became a true family-run business when Milton J. Larson named his sons Gerald and Kenneth President and Vice President of Larson Marine Service Incorporated, and whereas by 1980, by the 1980s, the third generation of Larson family members born and raised in Waukegan, Douglas, Kathleen, Brian, Laurie, and Gregory, began carrying on the tradition of their fathers and grandfathers and now manage and operate Larson Marine Service Incorporated. Whereas Larson Marine Service recently celebrated its 80th anniversary as a Waukegan-based business, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council offer a great, offer with great appreciation, a happy anniversary wish to Larson Marine Incorporated, and a heartfelt thank you to the Larson family for their long commitment to the city of Waukegan. Be it further resolved that a suitable imposse copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to Larson Marine Service of Waukegan dated the 16th day of September 2013.
I'd like to say to the Larson family, you have been a welcome asset to our community. As a child, I walked past Larson's quite often. My brother-in-law worked there for many, many years, and I commend you for your courage and your commitment to this community. If you'd step forward, please. Ladies and gentlemen, these men and their family has helped make Waukegan what it is today, and I can tell you, I personally appreciate your courage and the endeavors that you pursued all these years. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Can I make?
Yes, you may.
Okay. I promise not to talk over a half hour. No. I just want to say thank you. We're very pleased to receive this honor, and Larson Marine likes to be an active part of the city of Waukegan. We would like to work further with the city of Waukegan, the Port District, and the Downtown Association, so forth, to see if we can't make things move forward, help move things forward on the lakefront. Lisa May formed a committee last winter that included Viator, the Downtown Association, Nikotakis, ourselves, and the Port District to come up with some ideas, and the ideas were put forward, but so far, nothing's come of that, but I do think, would like to see that process continued because I think it could benefit the lakefront, and you can't deny there's room for improvement down there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. I entertain a motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Valco, to move public works up on the agenda above finance. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Mr. Moiseo, Alderman Moiseo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met today, and we have four items. Item A, award the bid for the replacement of the water plant entry stairs. The low-qualified bidder is Continental Construction Company of Evanston, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $82,000. Funds are available from bond proceeds in line M 555-916-027018, and I saw move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempass. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Bedling. Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempass.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Pass, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Item B, waive the bid process and purchase the water plant traveling screen for an amount not to exceed $253,000, $115, excuse me. Funds for the purchase are available from bond proceeds in line item 555-916027018, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moisio, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye. Thank you. Item C, waive the bid procedure and award the traveling screen demolition to Northern Divers USA for an amount not to exceed $175,000. Funds for this project are available from bond proceeds in line item 555-916027018, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moisio, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Thank you. And item D, request permission to participate in the upcoming county auction on September 28th, 2013, to dispose of old and wrecked vehicles, and I so move, and Alderman Tempest is going to make sure that we do this correctly.
Motion by Alderman Moisio, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Finance Committee, Alderman Valco.
Thank you, Your Honor. We met at 6:15 this evening, and what we're going to do now is come up with the money to pay for what Alderman Moisio's committee just asked for. The first thing on the agenda is authorization to use bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract for the purchase of water plant equipment, repair, and replacement, and the Finance Committee recommends authorizing the use of bond proceeds to award a contract to Siemens, S-I-E-M-E-N-S, in an amount not to exceed $253,115, to fund the repair and replacement water plant equipment, specifically the purchase of one Siemens through-flow traveling water screen, budget code 555-916027018, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is item B, authorization to use bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract for the purchase of water plant equipment, repair, and replacement, and the Finance Committee recommends authorizing the use of bond proceeds to award a contract to Northern Divers USA in an amount not to exceed $175,000, and there's a misprint there, there's an extra zero, so it's $175,000, not 175 million, to fund the repair and replacement of water plant equipment, specifically the demolition of the existing traveling screen, replacement of a sluice gate, S-L-U-I-C-E, and cleaning of water building, budget code 555-916027018, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Item C, authorization to use bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract for the purchase of water plant equipment, repair, and replacement. The Finance Committee recommends authorizing the use of bond proceeds to award a contract to Continental Construction Company in an amount not to exceed $82,000 to fund the repair and replacement of water plant equipment, specifically the repair of the water plant concrete entry stairs, budget code 555-916027018, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, the Finance Committee recommends granting permission to the proper city officials to issue a request for proposal, an RFP, for a consultant to conduct a feasibility study regarding police station remediation and reconstruction, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Next item on the agenda, the Finance Committee recommends granting permission to proper city officials to issue a request for proposal, an RFP, for the printing and mailing of water bills, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Last item, Your Honor, the Finance Committee recommends granting permission to the proper city officials to issue a request for proposal, an RFP, for vehicle sticker, software, and fulfillment, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item, is that done, Bill?
That's it, Your Sir.
Next item is Labor Relations. Item A, motion to approve a memorandum of understanding to supplement, modify, or extend the terms of the collective bargaining agreement by and between the city of Waukegan and the local 73 Service Employees International Union, AFL-CIO. What this does is extends the contract with the current union. I think what we're talking about here in, in reality, is a 2% pay raise across the board for their union members. Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Bedling.
President.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
There is no old business. There are no reports or communications. New business recommending actions by Corporation Council. Item A, approval of payroll dated September 6th, 2013, in the amount of $1,308,2365.15. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated September 16th, 2013, in the amount of $1,119,8289. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Item C, block party, approve all block parties. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Moisio. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item D, Treasury report for August 2013. Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Bedling. All's in favor?
Aye.
Item E, approval of Waukegan trick-or-treat hours Sunday, October 27th, 2013, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman May. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance and resolutions. Item A, ordinance to reflect handicap parking only in front of Lilac Ledge Apartments, 542 Washington Street, for the first three available parking spaces on Washington Street West of the exit of the driveway of 542 Washington Street. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Bedling. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Item B, ordinance to reflect handicap parking only on the west side of Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, for a distance of 140 feet north of Grand Avenue. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Item C, ordinance to reflect prohibited parking on the north side of Blanchard Street, from North Avenue to Poplar Street. Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Item D, ordinance extending the existing moratorium by nightclubs for three additional months. Motion by Alderman Bedling, second by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman's time. Proceed, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Bedling.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. There are a few things at audience time spoken that weren't, that aren't true. Let me first start by saying the air is cleaner now than it's been in 40 years, and I'll reiterate what I said the last time. When I grew up, I'm 59 years old, that power plant didn't have scrubbers on it, our cars used to burn leaded gasoline, our brake shoes were made out of asbestos. Where do you suppose that asbestos dust went every time the brakes were applied? In the street? In the air? In the water? I don't recall asthma being a big problem when I grew up in the 60s, so why are so many people with asthma nowadays? Once again, I think they need to look in their own grocery baskets and their own habits. Our kids, look at our city parks, they're empty. Where are the kids? They inside playing electronic games? They need to get outside and roll around in the dirt and build up their immune systems, what is really necessary. What they fail to tell you is the Germans, they pay approximately four times kilowatt-hour rate that we pay here in the United States. They have lots of wind turbines, lots of solar panels, yet they put out 2% more carbon dioxide this year than last year. Why is that? Because they have to run their, they're building new coal-fired plants, but they have to run all these coal-fired plants on hot idle because the voltage has to be consistent in the grid within one cycle. Otherwise, our electric motors don't work. They don't mention things like that. I would like to ask them, did they, did they tell people how much their electric rates will go up? I'm not a mathematician or anything, but I read this website called The Energy Collective, and the article was called "Why Power Density Matters." Best I could do the math would be that 830 megawatt station on the lakefront there. If you wanted to replace that with wind turbines, you would need a land area roughly the size of the entire city of Waukegan, Beach Park, and part of Zion. Any of you ever seen any of these 450-foot-tall monstrosities? Did they mention to you conservative estimates of a half a million birds, raptors, and bats that are killed by these machines every year? The Justice Department doesn't find them. Their search radius is quite often just in a little gravel area below. Well, these wind, the blades at the tip, they spin approximately 200 miles an hour. That's going to flip a bird pretty far, and they only check every 30 to 90 days, so you can pretty much guess that scavengers are carrying away food. That's why they don't find too many birds, because they don't really look for them, and they do it intermittently. And that's exactly what wind and solar power is. It's intermittent. It's not baseload power. You still need baseload power. I got an email, Earth Hour Challenge, with community electric aggregation. We could go 100% renewable. That's impossible. Imagine if every community signed up for that. How could that statement possibly be true? They don't even have enough wind turbines in Germany or Denmark. They have about 25% of their power. But like I said, their consumers are starting to complain, their industry is looking to move elsewhere because they are becoming uncompetitive. Do we want to turn our country into that? What concerns me is making the payroll around here, affordable electricity for the poor working people in Fourth Ward, people having jobs. We have an opportunity to bring manufacturing back to this country, but they're also against hydraulic fracturing. We have the cheapest natural gas in the world here. They don't like that either. So what are we supposed to do? I'd like to hear some of those answers out of them. Next time you come in, arm yourself with some facts. Ms. Ortiz, I gave you some links to read the last time. Apparently, you didn't read them. Do yourself a favor, if you want to contact me, I'll send them to you again. Unfortunately, the city website, glitch in our email address there, but if anybody would like to read what I read, you can contact me at Harold Bedling, all small letters, one word, at ATT.net, and I'll forward you some of the material that I read, and it comes from scientists, engineers. They explain how power plants work, how the grid works, electricity goes to the closest source. Yeah, with, I'm sure it all gets piled up in one thing, but this plant here, the electricity comes right to this community. You hear people say, "Oh, it goes to Nevada. We get our power from Delaware." Not true. That electricity comes into this community, it goes to its closest source. That's just the way it works. Through my travels through the ward, I saw a television laying, I won't say the address, but there's a television laying on the parkway, and it attracted my attention. It was somewhat busted up. Asked these young ladies that were sitting on the front porch whose it was, and they said it was the tenant up on the top floor. Well, I go around the side of the building, and the first thing I see is the entry door doesn't close, and the top of the door is about six inches short of the head of the jam. That's a problem. I've got to be colder than heck in there in the wintertime. So I open the door, there's a hole in the wall, go up to the third floor, knock on the door, and nobody answers. So I called the Fourth Ward's very capable for the north side Code Compliance Officer, Miguel Rivera. Miguel paid a visit the next day. Comes to find out they're running a rooming house. Five rooms, $250 apiece for an individual, and a woman with two children, $350 a month. Things like this go on in the community, and it's a blight on our neighborhoods, and I'm grateful for the due diligence that Miguel Rivera gave this incident here, and he's a really hard-working man. Tony Koval works the south side of the ward. Tony does a very good job. I, I think we all should be grateful for what our Code Compliance Department brings to this community, try to hold things together here. And I think I'll end with that. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest.
Thank you. Two items, I noticed we approved block parties as presented. I've just recently been to two block parties on my ward, and what a nice way for the community to come together and know each other and look out for each other. It's a great thing, and I encourage block parties. Also Neighborhood Watch, they kind of go together. block parties, also Neighborhood Watch, they kind of go together, Neighborhood Watch meetings, I've encouraged these along, we're, we're getting more and more in the community, and I encourage all wards to encourage Neighborhood Watch programs, it's another good way to know your neighbor, look out for your neighbor, and be an integrated part of the community. Alderman Bedling brings up some great points this evening, I think we cannot overreact at times, I think sometimes we overreact, we need to get the facts, I know the power company in, in my term here has reduced the pollution mandated by the feds, yeah, they've continued to reduce the emissions, and I think we ought to continue to check on them and see how they're doing, but we do need power, and I'm not going to jump through the hoops just to jump, I'm going to get the facts before I vote, and I'm going to know exactly why I'm voting the way I am. But I want to thank the mayor for his openness of his office, and his dedication to his job, it seems he's putting twelve, fifteen hours a day in, but, you know, he'll come together, he'll come together, and I want to thank you, and the Corporation Council having an office right here in the building, wow, what a nice way that is, you come downtown, he's there, you can talk to him, you got problems, his door is always open to visit, and I, I thank you for your openness, Steve, I really appreciate that, and thank you very much.
Alderman May. Alderman Valco.
Pass.
Alderman Rivera.
Well, I'd like to say a few words in regards, everyone up here supports clean air, myself, I'm an asthma research advocate, I have a foundation for asthma research, so I'm, you know, I really support that a lot for the University of Chicago, but to solely blame what's going on to asthma, you really got to look at, and I agree with Harold Bedling, you know, when you go out there and look at your, your groceries, and unfortunately, you know, people that smoke, I mean, there's young families that I see smoking in the same room that their, their infants are at, you don't think that that's causing asthma, so there's, there's a lot of, a lot of variables out there that, that cause asthma, but until, you know, I see better technology in, in wind power, you know, I, I too got to see the facts too as well, so, and I don't think we're even, not, we're not even close to, to that type of technology that's going to produce, you know, that amount of voltage to support, you know, the rest of the power for all these communities when commite is, is overloaded, so I need to see facts too as well. But again, like I said, take a look at what you, you buy, smoking, you know, that has a lot to do with asthma too as well, so, thank you.
Alderman Moizio.
Yeah, just one thing, I have to concur with Mr. Belmonte, I live in the Third Ward, I live over by Macary Field, and I heard that noise from Belvedere Mall, that's, that is entirely too loud when you can hear it miles away, entirely too loud, I don't mind a, a community event, but we have a few of them that seem to go on, and they just think that they can just play and, and carry on as loud as they want for everybody to hear it, we have an ordinance, and I think when that gets filled out, or the permit gets filled out, you have to let them know, if this is too loud, and neighbors call, and people come, and, and the police come, we're shutting you down, your music's off, sorry. We can't have that, I don't know what, I, I got to live probably a mile, two miles from Belvedere Mall, and I could hear it clear as the day, that's ridiculous, you can't do that to people, you can't do that, we need to look into that, and I think we need to tell people, if you take a permit out and you're going to do that, and if it's too loud, and the neighbors complain, the police come, it's getting shut down, plain and simple, we have an ordinance for it, we could do it. Thank you.
Motion by Alderman May, Second by Alderman Newsom to adjourn, alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alderman, please stay for a minute, I just want to tell you, give you some information, that's all, just point of interest. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much, hope to see you the first of next month, first Monday of next month, thank you.